Last Wednesday, I received a parking violation notice at a garage at P. Park. All because my license plate was clearly visible. And while I accept no responsibility, it is deeply troubling to me that the university swiftly penalizes students for minor infractions, yet fails to respond with the same urgency when a student is assaulted. It is unacceptable that the university spends more energy on going after students than going after the people assaulting them. I urge the administration to realign its priorities and take meaningful action by implementing continuous patrolling around campus to actively deter crime. This increased presence will not only enhance security, but also ensure that students are aware of where law enforcement is at all times, fostering a safer environment. Prioritizing student safety through visible and consistent patrols, just as inhabitants of parking violations should be a central focus. Thank you.
All right, Hoonies Pooch, we're here at a town hall meeting. This meeting's for the students of UH.
Yes, ma'am. Come up. Make sure you tell everyone your names. Project into the microphone.
Okay, hi everyone. My name is Mina and I'm the president of these numbers at UH. And for all of you that haven't watched the interview with Renew and Brigitte, he, in the interview, he claims to be a realist who believes UH needs to make changes in terms of security. However, in the same sentence, he says, "Everyone knows what a basic border item of law enforcement being here." If he wants to be real, since our protest on the 12th, there have been 15 reported thefts and three more sexual assaults. Then, in that same interview, he says, "There are, he said, 'there are a few incidents that are guaranteed to happen in a population so big,'" and he says, "There are only a few incidents, even though that it happens every single day, sometimes even two to three times a day."
Can y'all hear?
And their supposed enhanced security had very minimal effects on crime reduction like I mentioned earlier. Which brings me to my next point, where increasing the UHPD funding seems to be their answer when it's not. That has not changed. It happens every single year without justification. And at some point, the realist, Brigitte, needs to realize that crime is not a police issue, it is a public health issue. I need UH administration and a lot of people on campus to realize that people do not do crime for fun. It is an act of desperation whenever people experience poverty, they're unhealth, they have no access to healthcare, and they have inadequate education. And this was exacerbated by UH's gentrification. You know, today, I don't want people to resort to racism or overpolicing, but instead, I want to hear more discussion about long-term community-based efforts to disrupt cycles of violence and facilitate compassion for UH students and people in the third ward. Same thing I already mentioned, improving infrastructure and transportation services. But two more in particular that I am interested in are the free self-defense classes. Right now, they are offered for free on a two-week program, but after that, students have to go back to paying for them. But I'm asking UH administrations to pay for the self-defense classes that should be hosted very frequently. This used to be a thing before COVID, but after COVID, they removed it. They implemented an online program, which isn't very well-maintained or kept up with. And another thing is that I also want to reform the recording process and also excuse absences and class exemption policy. Yes, it's true that crime might not be inevitable here, or crime is inevitable here, and students have to face it, but there should be a better support system for us. Survivors should be allowed excuse absences from their class because like everyone here knows, that dealing with trauma like that does not happen in a week. It affects students' grades, their assignments, and things like that. And while they're worrying about how they're paying for their court cases lawyers, how they're gonna make a police report and things like that, they also can't be worrying about doing their essay on Friday night. And I also want their tuition to be refunded too. Because not only are they not able to focus on class, they shouldn't be forced to pay thousands of dollars for an experience that was not their fault. And those were the two demands that pop up in my head, and I'm gonna pass the microphone on to someone else. Thank you.
So before you move, I've got some questions, because you should have known there were two demands, and I heard one of the two.
I'm sorry.
So let's make sure we're on the same page. So one thing you want is free self-defense classes. Is that accurate? My staff is writing this down, right?
Yes.
Okay. So one thing you want is free self-defense. Is that accurate?
Yes, key.
Another demand you have is if you're a victim of sexual, if you're a victim of crime on the University of Houston, then there needs to be something that is in there to fund your tuition for that semester. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
That's two. But I heard you say a whole bunch of stuff. Is there more than that?
Um, I'm gonna pull the gula out here. And I am kind of...
Spin, project, project.
So, yes, I did lie about two demands. I kind of added more. One of them was the free self-defense classes. The other one is reforming excuse absences for students that experience crime and also a class exemption policy that refunds the students' tuition. That's great.
Okay. Nice. That's good.
Shout out to the students that are here.
So I wanted to announce somebody else that just walked in. One of my favorite people in the whole room. I'm gonna actually have her come up here and stand next to me. State Representative Charlene Ward Johnson. She is a University of Houston graduate. She is my line sister. We pledge Alpha Phi Alpha sorority incorporated and follow 1987 because the monument stands on December 6, 1987. This is not her district, but she loves the University of Houston. What's the most important you want in UH? Well, some?
Well, while I was in school, I became very active. I was part of the Black Student Union and I also pledged sorority. Before graduation, I was president of the University of Houston Black Alumni Association. And then I was on the Alumni Foundation Board. So what we would do as part of the Black Alumni was meet with students to see how it would be like to be a Black student on campus. Because her experience is a concern to us. And so I'm so glad that Representative Johnson is doing this because we want to make sure you come into school to learn. We want you to feel safe and we want you to be heard. So please continue to voice your opinions. I know there's going to be a task force, but I believe students should be a part of the solution and be a part of that task force as well. So thank you for having the courage to come here and voice your opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Ashley, do you have a representation on that? Come up and speak. Who's next?
All right, so the students are speaking. Students are able to come up here and voice their concerns.
You graduated from college and you go to a platform job. I hope you speak, because close minds don't get bad. Y'all heard that? And I am not living your experiences. I can only tell the university what I hear from you. And I can only tell the DA's office what I hear and learn from you. So now is not the time to be afraid and no one will retaliate against you. I promise you that. And if somebody does, you need to let me know, and then I will retaliate against them.
Hey, state rep.
Can you say?
What have you heard so far that you did not realize?
I didn't realize how many, one of the ladies came up here and said, "How many crimes have they committed since we heard about these high-profile ones?" Because we would think that that would be it. I did not realize that one or two crimes were happening a day. I also am concerned about hearing that someone said that crime is inevitable at the University of Houston. If I were a parent, I wouldn't send my child to a school where the school believes that crime is inevitable. I just wouldn't do that. I mean, it's okay if you say it didn't happen immediately. If it does happen to you, I think you need to be concerned. Oh, I'm so seen.
Hey.
Hey, y'all. Brizzy? Good news. Brizzy's here.
Hey, what's up, everybody? Hey. Jalonda, I got a question for you guys. Do you guys know if UHPD is gonna ever partner up with HPD or any other law enforcement agencies if they need help? I mean, because it sounds like maybe it might not be manageable. I don't know. Does anybody know? I think that's a good question.
So that's one of the questions that we're going to ask. I know that the school did tell me that they are trying to get work with outside law enforcement. I don't know if you were here when we first started, but we have Smokey Phillips Sr., who's an elected constable for 367. He's willing to work with the University of Houston. We also have the police chief of Texas Southern and who's walking in back their way so Brizzy can get you. So he's willing to work, and he's also willing to partner with, I guess, our university, the complete university, because we understand that we need communities to work together to stop crime. We need communities to work together, and we need law enforcement to work with the community. Law enforcement should not just be in the community to arrest. I'm gonna say that one more again. This is the violence. They should not just be in the community just to arrest. Something else that I had not heard you asked me about, them being quick to take people for insignificant things, but not challenge the big crimes. Again, as I said before, that could have very easily been a capital murder. Very easily. Like literally, if a girl who had been raped had been killed in the process, that would have been a capital murder. If the guy was wrong with whatever it was wrong from at gunpoint had been killed, that would have easily been a capital murder. So these are split-second instances of crime that could have turned to a murder. Apart from the psychological effects that are lasting. I was, I'm a victim, I'm a survivor of rape. And it traumatizes you forever. So when a young lady talks about having your tuition reimbursed or something that's important because you're traumatized, you literally can't focus on school, and you shouldn't be up to those standards. So I understand that.
Yep.
And can you tell me again?
Hello, everyone. My name is Christopher Cooper. Yesterday, I participated in a student protest led by the SGA. And we actually stood at the Welcome Center Garage for 15 minutes. And for 15 long minutes, we tried to wrap up minds a little while about what that student could have possibly went through during the commitment of that sexual assault crime. But at the end of the day, we never will know what she went through. And she has to deal with that trauma for the rest of her life. And had it burdened both on the university and on UHPD, because had UHPD been vigilant, that crime could have been intercepted, and it could have been avoided if UHPD was vigilant enough. But I think the overarching issues, one comes down to reception of security on the campus for pernos to come in and rob students. I mean, the two screw-up robberies, the students fled on foot and they were not caught by UHPD. I've heard sub-instances where it's taken UHPD 30 minutes to come to the student who reports a crime and let alone catch the person. A student was talking about parking enforcement. I realized that in the past two weeks, I see a parking enforcement car more than I see a UHPD car. When, if you ask me, "What is UHPD new from?", it looks like, I don't know. I couldn't tell you. I never see them on campus. I only see them in cars. And my act during that protest, a UHPD officer on the ETV was tracking us as we walked throughout the campus. And you could say they were more vigilant about watching students protest than watching parking garages or parking lots within our campus. So it comes down to reception, I believe. And again, UHPD has to be held accountable, the university has to be held accountable. We processed the lack of accountability from Chief Moore of UHPD. In an ABC 13 article, he would have asserted that his officers were low-trained to watch over instances and crimes, but when he had his wife, UHPD didn't directly file the charges to the official attorney's office. He wasn't sure. So it's obvious there is some kind of disconnect between their ability to do their job properly and to watch over our campus properly. I mean, you have students who are arming themselves with pepper spray, tasers, and even some other more harmful means to make it to their cars safely, to make it to A to D safely. For the on-campus students, they're not particularly saving their doors because we got door robberies last semester. So it's both for students that commute and for students that live on campus. I mean, there's a hysteria on campus. Within the past two weeks, we weren't sure whether another crime was gonna be committed on campus because of just what could happen at any given night. And even now, and I think if you keep up with the crimes committed on campus, it happens in waves. It might die down during spring semester, and then something happens within the fall or within the winter break, within the summer. So students are doing everything in their power, from the individual level to the collective level. And we're doing everything in our part to make sure that we're protected. And I'm no longer hopeful, hopefully, hopefully for the university to do something. I'm demanding for the university to do something. Because as a student, I can't accept this anymore. I can't accept my classmates to have to say a prayer before they go to their cars. I mean, that's unbelievable. And again, I can't accept that as a student. I mean, there's many layers to the problem. One, you pay for this institution, and we're having to trade our Latin play for an education. And it's things like that, fat precedents, that sets a bad example for the university and for the university who wants to reach out and strand for students, who wants to reach out to students within the greater Houston area. I have a high school student who watches UH for nursing, and I have to tell her about these unofficial rules about UH. You have to be off campus by a certain time of the day. If anybody knows what sundown times are like, that's what UH is starting to feel like. You have to be off campus by a certain, before it becomes night outside. So I just ask that students are doing everything in our power. So city officials, state representatives, I ask that you do everything in your power. And if the university can't adequately do their job, I ask that you step in and you check them and make sure that they do their job properly. Thank you.
I've got a question, because I need some clarification on something that you said. Is there, is there an official rule where the school says you gotta be off campus by sundown? Or your students are saying, "The best way to try to protect myself is to make sure I'm not outside after dark."
Students feel that way, because I have a friend who will rather sit in traffic than stay on campus to try to decide to leave because of what's happening in the past two weeks.
I mean, that's problematic. And it's also, as a person who studied real hard in college, I was not always finished studying. I slept down. Sometimes I was studying until late, late, late hours of the night. And when I had a roommate, and I didn't want to keep work out, I would go to the library to study the day. So that would have been problematic for me when I was in school. Would have affected my, would have affected straight days. I was working so hard to make.
And you have students who take night classes too, so there's a budget deficit that might affect them.
Let me say this. So some of the concerns that I have heard directly from my office, I've had students call me and tell me that they have night classes and that you are not gonna go to them anymore because they don't feel safe. And I remember thinking, "It's probably too late this semester to drop a class." And if you stop them on the class, then you're gonna get an F. So not only is that your transcript is affected because you made an F because you gave what you thought was best to save your life. I've also had someone contact me and say, a parent, actually a mom, contacted my office and said she really thought she wanted her daughter to go to the University of Houston. It was her top choice, but she doesn't feel comfortable sending her daughter to the University of Houston anymore. And her daughter's a good student. Not that I want UH to land a good student, because all kinds of people go to college, and some make good grades and some don't make as good grades. But we certainly don't want to be using potential students because they don't feel safe or their parents don't feel safe. And I'll share some more stories about what people said to me directly, which caused me to have this town hall. Who's next? Yes, ma'am. Come on.
Shout out to the students speaking up. Shout out to all these wonderful students. Go Coogs. What's up, Hoonies Pooch? We're here at a UH town meeting here off of emancipation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sodaro Moradasa, Medical and Hereditary. Okay, cool. I am a student organizer with Hope. I work at my campus pretty much my entire time being here. And the main thing that I kind of want to emphasize while I'm speaking up here is that we should not be taking the things that are happening right now as an opportunity to promote prejudice, promote anti-blackness, and promote the increased surveillance of students on campus. Because this contributes, this is an example or a continuation of the kinds of things that have proliferated politically, because people have taken tragedies that have impacted individual people and reduced to perpetuate future and ongoing tragedies. For example, when they, when national politicians used an incident that happened to a young girl to promote violence through ice raids, closing borders, and breaking young families. What I'm trying to say to y'all is more police is not the answer. The lady that got up and said that you haven't seen, that she hasn't seen the increase in police officers, even though already there were, said that there were. Actually, you have. There has been an increase of more police, but they're not in parking lots, they're not in dark areas, they're not in the rooms where the majority of sexual assault happening. You know where they are though? They're at peace and protests en masse, in riot here, with the top-tier technology that they've been using their $16 million tours. The police aren't making you feel safe because that's not what they're supposed to do. I need y'all to really sit here and log in and think with me real quick, okay? Just because someone puts "safety" in front of their name doesn't mean that's what they do. We can really look at the examples of where, in your personal experience, where you've seen police. Because if they really care about safety, they would know that the first six weeks on campus is the most dangerous time for a woman. That's where the majority of sexual assaults happen. It's actually called the red zone. If they were here to protect us, they'd be intervening there. If they wanted to protect us, they could make themselves available in the most dark parts of campus. If they wanted to protect us, they'd be where students walk. Instead, the last time our professor arrived from UHPD, because people arrived, was closed down. I would ask my captain, ask the driver how they were doing. They cut me off and just asked me where I was going. They sat in silence and didn't speak to me the entire time. There are multiple examples all throughout right there online, talking about how UHPD has been incompetent, has not cared about students, has been on their phones whenever they're supposed to be serving or supposed to be on the clock. And what I'm trying to say is that those of you who say that we need to maintain the image of safety to keep criminals off campus, who are you implicating? When y'all say online that we should build a fence around a public university, who are you all trying to keep out? The other day, or yesterday, actually, I released an article about defunding UHPD, at least in part. Because when you call for safety, the primary question that I'm thinking is, "Safety for whom?" On that article, and all over Reddit, all over Instagram, we have legitimate student leaders, all raised, people that are supposed to be protecting us, saying, "I don't care that UHPD pulled a gun on a Black student last year. I don't care that UH has had a racist history, has promoted the gentrification of students, of third ward. I don't care that this history has happened. Oh, we need to keep these criminals off the streets. Oh, our ward is a bad neighborhood. It's a bad area." You don't see how that's perpetuating the same sort of violence and the same sort of impoverishment that UH has continued to perpetuate during its time here? All I'm calling for is that we need to call for real safety. We need to provide the kind of programs that actually prevent crime. There was a student up here that said that if UHPD had been, had been more on top of it during the sexual assault that happened on February 7th, then they would have intervened. That's not what would have stopped or prevented that sexual assault. What would have stopped or prevented it is if we had people arrived that took people to their cars. If we had a reliable system that draws people off at specific and reliable times, so even if it puts them to their cars, then groups of people would be arriving at locations at the same time and providing a natural braking system. These are the things that actually prevent crime, not just respond faster to it. Thank you.
I've got a question. You can't just say that. What's that?
So it's a study phenomenon that on university campuses, the first six weeks on campus are the most dangerous times for sexual assaults for women. I don't know the exact statistic. I believe it's like one in four sexual assaults that happen on campus happen in the first six weeks that a woman is on campus.
Great. Thank you so much. Now, we have Councilmember Carolyn Chavez. She is a councilwoman for District 8, the District of Destination. And you are in District 8 right now. Who's the next student? Yes, ma'am? I see some sorrows back there. Beautiful ladies at Alpha Phi Alpha sorority incorporated. Hey, sorrows.
Hi. That's my name. I am in the house.
That's my name. Just start leaving that place, yeah?
Hello. My name is Mariah Castro. I'm a student organizer at UH. I work with students for the society. And I just wanted to say, kind of, going off of what our last video was talking about, how a lot of these, how police don't really help in these situations. I have a very personal connection with the events that have happened at UH because I've been sexually assaulted as well. Administration wants to increase police presence to see me deal with these issues, but in my experience, police have not helped at all. And I've been in a position where I felt like I had to go to them, where I had to talk about my experience. I went to my nearest police station. I talked. And I talked about what had happened in every detail I could. They assured me that it was for an investigation. They assured me that if I went through everything, then it would help the perpetrator be sent to prison or prosecuted. I went through every detail. I went through what clothes I was wearing, I went through what position it happened in. I went through these numbers again because I thought going through just that one more time would be useful to somebody. That would stop my anger toward more people. And they said that they would follow up with friends again. They said that they would follow up with me and to talk in detail. And after that, charges would be sent to the DA's office. I waited months for that phone call. I waited so many months while I had still shared a class with my abuser.
Oh, my God.
It never came. Harris County District Department did nothing for my case. Charges were never filed because I don't think they ever needed to be at the DA's office.
Wow. Oh, God. Prayers.
Just this experience, it's, it maybe not even just what police can do like that. It's not a matter of, for me, of funding or putting them in the right place or of making sure that they do their jobs. If they didn't care, they just didn't care. Police didn't really do anything for me, but what came through for support was my community. What came through for support was my teachers, my families, my family and my friends. They offered real and tangible support of keeping me safe, keeping my radius away from me, making sure that I was recovering well. Eventually, I, just because of the lack of response coming out from the police, I had to give up. I knew that it wasn't, it wasn't certain meaning, that my only guarantee in pursuing legal action is re-qualitization. The only guarantee was to be in a room, possibly for months on end, with my rape. possibly for months on end with my radius for charges that might not even get filed for a sentence that might not even be handed down. So I focused on the, on the tangible and, and sometimes, uh, rocky process of recovery. And, um, and that was where, and that was where I finally really tried through. Um, so I feel, I feel that what should happen for UH is not a police and security-based response. Because, um, because many, as they victims, know my experience and for that reason do not want to go to police and do not see them as a trustworthy source of, uh, social protection. So, um, I'm going to echo what a lot of the other activists and organizers have said here and say that we need to bring this back to our community. Uh, we need to implement, re-implement long-term community resources such as police law defense, um, programs where, um, people can score others to their car. Uh, real resources so that, um, so that people can recover from this. Uh, and it's starting to lock, I didn't have much prepared, but, um, I'm hoping that sharing my experience here and, um, rather than kind of echoing the demands of other organizers, what my experience can, can help cause some real change. Thank you.
So this is the DA's office. This is the Chief of Staff to DA Sean Tier. And they actually asked, actually, possibly criminals and people who commit crimes. So respectfully suggesting you maybe feel comfortable, talk to them and maybe something can happen. As I feel safe with the risk, just out there. And I'm glad that you are recovering and that your community is supporting you right now. But, again, I just want to thank DAT's office for sending people. And I know the Chief of Staff is like, never do a command. It's almost like he's here. But I know he's coaching his kids. He told me he coaches his kids. I coached my son. So I understand why he can't be here. And I'm going to say this a third time. This is the Harris County District Attorney's Office. This is the Chief of Staff of the Harris County District Attorney, Sean Tier. And I would respectfully suggest you start a conversation with him. They have a victim impact, uh, service and they help provide you with the social services you need. And they also have the ability to prosecute and wait you. Anyone else? You can come up?
Um, okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, there's a microphone. I can speak into there. You can speak into, speak into the microphone.
All right, like this? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to first thank you, my representative, for this opportunity, for this opportunity to voice our thoughts. And I'm not going to say anything new because our student activist has put what we needed to say very clearly. So I'm just going to give an experience that I and my students have faced on campus. To put it simply, I'm scared. I'm afraid of being a victim of a crime. I'm afraid of being identified as a threat. There are too many stretches of dark and empty sidewalks on campus. Especially when it's new for me, it's almost pitch black. Um, we have the right, but a lot of us live outside of the boundaries of campus. I live just outside of campus. My bus driver won't be able to take me there. So that means I have to walk another unnecessary dark path to get home. I've heard people say something absolutely vile and disgusting things about the third ward. Saying they should be careful on these hydras and foot lanes, wherever the hell that leads. And I've even heard people, uh, I've even heard toxic people bring their firearms to campus in Texas's, until carry bombs. And I have to worry about walking, I can worry about not walking too fast, not walking too slow because I don't want to be seen as someone to be afraid of. And I don't want to be seen as someone who can be an easy vet, an easy target. Now, again, I'm not going to say anything new. In fact, the events are posted all over the doors of the Collin, of the Collin Building. But the fact is that hysteria that you have created by mad arrests and our calls isn't itself a problem and a danger to all of us, especially people who look like me. How many more people would get hurt before you do something about it?
Thank you. So I'm going to address something that I keep hearing off of Third Ward. I'm from the corner of Scott Mcgall. Third Ward is the, is the District of Destination. People want to live here. People will pay a whole bunch of money to live here. And so to anyone who thinks that Third Ward is not safe, you are wrong. And Third Ward was here before the University of Houston got here. Let's be clear. And I want to say this. That I think that my alma mater needs to do a better job of facing negative things that are going on at the campus and help just be in the lead over winning sports championships. I think that is very important. See, the promise is that I really sports, he does. I mean, I'm a former four-time national champion at the University of Houston. I've won a whole bunch of awards, but let me tell you, at some point you get old and you've got to hope you have a good brain to be able to earn a living, to pay your bills, and be a productive citizen. So my education at the University of Houston has carried me far more than my athletic ability at the University of Houston ever did. So, I don't know if people from the University of Houston have shown up yet. But I will say this. If you can't listen to the regular students, I'm going to say this again, if you don't listen to the regular students and if you label the students and the student groups based on what you think about, that's just wrong. Those students from those organizations are paying tuition. Last hour, the tuition at the University of Houston was expensive. So all students should be created, and all students should be listened to. That's my respectful opinion. And I promise you that I'll use my position as a state representative for House District 147, the district that the University of Houston sits in, to be your voice and carry the message to the university. I'm also going to ask, and if she could come up here to my city council colleague, Carolyn Evans Chavez, then I ask her to come up here. I'm going to ask my colleague, the state representative, Charlene Moore Johnson, to come up here. I'm going to ask my law enforcement friend, the Chief of Police at Texas Southern University, the Chief of Public Safety to come up here. And I'm going to ask, uh, Councilmember, uh, Todd Carter's back, remember, to come up here. And I'm going to ask Smokey Phillips, or Representative Smokey Phillips, the Councilperson 367 to come up here. And I'm going to say this. We are elected and somewhat appointed to represent you. And police don't stop being, because our TSH police, they still police where they buy their bags. And the Councilperson 367 police are still police where they across the state. And Councilmember Chavez represents the University of Houston for city stuff, which means she's over HPD. And Representative War Johnson, uh, has a voice to people listening to us. We pay for DPS. And we, and we also help fund universities, which means they need to listen to us too. And Councilmember Carter, she's, so they overlook the HPD budget and HPD patrols, uh, the University of Houston. And so I am going to ask my colleagues if they will stand with me and unity to, to make accountability for the University of Houston. Because the University of Houston uses our services and they use our money. And they use our office. Oh, I forgot, come up here. DAT, I sit up there, you're looking at me getting in my face, and I totally forgot to bring you up here. And so, we promise you that we will bring what you have to say to the school. And we promise you that we are going to report back to you if the school is receptive to what we say. Or if they're not. And let me be clear. I did not have this town hall to bash the University of Houston. I had this town hall to find out what's going on at the University of Houston so that we could try to figure out how we can be a part of the solution and not sit or stand idly by and just be a part of the problem. Because to remain silent in situations like this is to aid the oppressor. And in this instance, the criminal. So I just want for you to know that, I want for you to know that, and I want for you to look at us. Because you need to know who's elected to represent you. So that when things don't go like you want, you have somebody to complain to and tag, we're it. So I want for each elected official to say the name of your elected official in a, in a way that they can reach you to complain about something.
My name is Clayton Britton and I represent Councilmember Todd Carter at large, position number three. And I came tonight because we're passionate about public safety. And our intern here had a beautiful speech that she gave and voiced her opinion as well. I've got business cards and information in the back after we're done here. If y'all would like to reach Councilmember Todd Carter and address any of your concerns with her as well.
So there, so there are some people who aren't here that can't get your business card. You've got a phone number, you've got an email. Say it right there. Speak slowly so people can understand you.
Our email address is at large3@houstontx.gov. At large, the number three, at houstontx.gov.
Thank you. I want to say my last gesture. The last.
Well, good evening. I am Councilmember Carolyn Evans Chavez, the Councilmember for District D, what I call the District of Destination. I certainly want to thank State Representative Jolanda Jones, who always brings it to the forefront. And I, I really appreciate this and I appreciate the opportunity. Obviously, there needs to be some sensitivity training for our, uh, public safety officers. I don't think they sometimes take it as seriously as they need to and realize that this could be their mother, their daughter, their brother, their sister. And this needs to come home because this is a violent crime, not necessarily a sexual crime. And so certainly, we know that sometimes people just say, oh, this is sex, this is young people, they'll get over it. But they don't realize the trauma that comes along with that, that you carry with you. And so I'm going to follow the instructions and give the information before she taps on one of my shoulders. And just tell you, I
Yes, she knows that, yeah.
Yes, and I respect it, you know, I, I, I clap back to. But anyway, I just want to say, you can go on the City of Houston website and you can reach me. That's very easy. Or you can do District D, like Davis, like Destination, at houstontx.gov. Feel free to reach out. I'm very, very passionate about the community people. I have always lived in Third Ward. I went to D Jack A. High School. I probably took the hardest class of my life at the University of Houston. I graduated from College of Atlanta, which is also in a period where we have a lot of things going on. But you know all about travel and cadence and all, and please don't go anywhere by yourself. It's, it's just too dangerous. And for any of people that think that these crimes will occur all over Houston, then you really need to rethink it. But this is a vulnerable crime. We certainly want protection to the best of our ability. Carolyn Evans Chavez, Councilmember of District D, the District of Destination. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Hi, everyone. May we represent?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Chief Todd Brown, I'm Texas Southern University. Um, just here to support you guys, you know, especially I heard, the nation out there, uh, whoever you know, needs someone to, uh, reach out to Texas Southern as long as they're, you can reach us at seven one three, three one three, seven one three. That is my dispatch. And I promise you that someone's on duty at all times and I'll also be there.
Can you say the number one more, one more time, please?
Seven one three, three one three, seven one three.
Thank you. Y'all ready? I need y'all to see. The DA should come and let you see this here. I don't know if y'all, did y'all get that? Oh, okay. Next.
Uh, Billy, number ten, Justin Hall. I work for Constable James Smokey Phillips, Constable 367. We pass out a lot of, have, um, some safety tips. Uh, my phone number is on that panel for those that didn't get it. The phone number is seven one three, six four three, six six zero two. That's our emergency dispatch. Uh, 367, we, um, support the Texas Southern University Police Department. We also support UHPD anytime that they call us. We're going to come and we're going to support. We support anyone that gives us a call or can see an E. We send them to the plate. If you look around the room tonight, this place is covered outside as well with 367 vehicles, 367 officers. So we're there to support whatever the issue is. All right, we put these uniforms on. The only thing here is the fact that on the when we took the altar, we take everyone, we, we are not assigned to the campuses, but we will be on the campuses, uh, uh. I believe we spoke briefly, I, I think, but my office spoke briefly with the police chief regarding some support. So there is support coming from my office. All right, seven one three, six four three, six six zero two, Constable James Smokey Phillips.
All right. What's the situation? If you're worried, you're paying us, you're paying us. They're scared, they think the crime is making it worse. That's what, let them know what to do and tell them to reach out to you.
Excellent. My name is Lauren Burr. I'm the Chief of Staff at the Harris County District Attorney's Office. And I'm here on behalf of DA Sean Tier, who's also an undergraduate from the University of Houston, and he also graduated from UH Law School. So I know that, uh, the campus and student body are dear and dear to his heart. Uh, we were grateful to be invited by Representative Jones, who is a fierce advocate, not only for the community, but in the courtroom. That is a spirit that is well. And I wish you made some jokes about, you know, being an athlete back in the day. I think you could still kick many of our butts in this room, let's be honest. Um, but on a serious note, um, thank you for all of you who spoke. Um, it was important for us to hear, not only as representatives, um, at District Attorney's Office, but I have to tell you that as a mother, I was incredibly proud to hear the way that you all spoke. And I was also very heartbroken to hear how some of you have been made to feel, um, where you don't feel safe and you're also scared to be perceived as a threat. No parent wants a child to feel that way. And I'm sorry that, that you do. Um, you can contact the District Attorney's Office. Uh, the best way is an email. It's DA, at DAO dot HCTX dot net. Uh, you can also try it by phone. It's seven one three, two seven four, fifty eight hundred. Um, I personally check the email account as well as other people, um, daily. And I want you to know that on behalf of DA's office, we are happy to come to some of your student groups if you ever want us to listen. Reach out and we will do our best to be there. Um, yes, we do prosecute crimes. When law enforcement brings cases to us, we review the facts. We look at everything, we review the evidence. Sometimes that can be the same day. Sometimes cases may be brought days, weeks, months, years later. We will always review those cases and in charges are pressed, we then handle them in court. But I want you all to know, because I've heard some of you, and I've heard, um, some of you feel that maybe law enforcement isn't the way you want to go. And And I can't fault you for whatever experiences you've had, um, that would make you feel that way. Praise my heart, but I, I understand. One thing that many people do not know about our office is we have an entire division, um, it's our protective order division. If you are a victim of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, you can come to our office. You can be an advocate. You can apply for a civil protective order. We will represent you free. In, in the protective order court, there are a few exceptions, like if it's a protective order is caught during the course of a divorce or something like that, that's normally done over in a family court. But if you have been a victim of sexual assault, or I should say a survivor of sexual assault, um, or any sort of dating violence, and you don't want to go press charges, you don't feel like you're ready to go through that process, you can still seek protection and our office will help you do that. You will not be, you do not have to file charges in order to seek the protective order. Um, of course, we hope that everybody can feel comfortable enough at some point during the process that they would allow us to help them hold that person accountable. But at the end of the day, um, regardless of accountability, we have resources and services to help you go from being a victim to a survivor. And we will do that for your charge. Please reach out to us. Um, we're always happy to listen and we're always happy to come to you and listen to what you need from our office.
Okay, can you repeat your phone number and your email again?
Yes, ma'am. The phone number is, um, seven one three, two seven four, fifty eight hundred. Um, the email, which is, I promise you, it's going to be more efficient than the phone lines, we're working on that. It's DA at D A O dot H C T X, Harris County District Attorney dot net. Um, again, we check it multiple times a day. We've got at least three people checking it and I personally check it and you will get a response.
Thank you so much. I'm pressing this to, what's the name of the board Johnson?
Hello, I'm Charlene Ward Johnson. I would like to add, it's okay to ask for help. If you need mental health counseling, please seek it. There's no stigma to that. It's always better to get the help you need mentally to help you get through this process. Trust me. Some people may get it and they never tell you, but please get help if you need the counseling, if you need support, please ask for it. And I am Charlene Ward Johnson. My district is on the North Side and I'm probably a little bit too long now. And I'll make sure that you do have good experience here and I'm here to support, uh, like what Jones said, going to the, uh, to the university and addressing your concerns with them. Uh, you can reach me at charlenewoodby, charlene dot ward johnson at house, that, you know?
It's charlene dot ward johnson at house, that Texas, that.
Charlene Woodby.
Yeah, yeah, I'm in Texas, I say Texas. Charlene, Charlene is new to the world. It's all my help right now. Charlene dot johnson at house dot Texas dot gov.
No, no, I'm also, I, I am on Twitter, R E T C W J.
Say it again, speak slowly, please.
R E T C W J.
We have another speaker. Okay, another speaker. Thank you. I really appreciate y'all. Appreciate you.
All right, we got another speaker. We're here at a town hall meeting for U H students. They are addressing their safety concerns following recent incidents of crime, rape, and other
Lady Shaq, come on.
Reported incidents.
So, uh, earlier there was a young lady that spoke about a sex, we think it's not there. Some of them, some of them, they're helping us, so, uh, we don't worry about it, safety, some of them. The neighborhood, U H, everyone is welcome. And if they have safety, some of them are really dealing with, uh, sex trafficking, so they're dealing with anything that you possibly think about. I want to set up a case, man, it's going to be quick to the public, for you guys, so please, be on the watch that, uh, I could really start it out there.
So question is that, at the, at D Texas Southern University?
It's only at D Texas Southern.
Which is also one of those that you want to accept. But I say that to say this, if you will give me the information that I'm looking at my special. Okay, you also, you guys can also follow me on at jawanda jones dot com. The jawanda is a black name. J O L A, D A, on the way, F. You back yours, K. Think you're one to take one around the F J. It's the truth. For myself, don't think my granddaughter ever be, maybe not. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to Representative Jones's office, all the impressive, uh, letter, uh, that I wrote last week. Uh, my name is Lauren Morton. I am a alum of the University of Houston, class of twenty-three. I was the Honors College Spirit Houston marching band, uh, campus organizer for D-Small person, speaking of organizations. Uh, and I did not plan on speaking today, so I do not have any prepared for today. But I have many thoughts to make about students this year and also what different alumni in offices this year. Um, to start, someone had a question previously about will U H P D collaborate with H P D and other offices? And I want to say, even if there are purpose collaboration in the future, all of these offices are already present on campus. Uh, U H is surrounded by Scott Street, Builder, uh, Elgin, and MLK. All of those are public public parks, so H P D is present there. We have multiple Metro stops present, uh, including a purple line kind of personally. Uh, there is Metro Police also present. I want to know whether first assaults, the scooter assault or someone brought a gun, probably that would add a Metro Purple Line stop.
Wow.
So there are multiple police jurisdictions that are already out there. Um, Representative Ward Johnson, thank you so much for being here, but you brought up, uh, seeking mental health help if needed. Whenever I needed mental health help, I was a student at the University of Houston, my sophomore year, I saw CAP, which is the official mental health services. Uh, they told me they would give me an appointment and they never asked me to follow that. I never seen mental health services. Mental health was one of the issues that we brought up during the, um, two suicides that occurred on campus, uh, I want to say in twenty twenty-three. Uh, that is two public suicides that happened, not including the ones that happened in the dorms that year and in surrounding areas of campus. Uh, a lot of them want to say judge and walk around sexual violence, especially because that was one of the violent crimes that happened. But I do want to note that there was a student that was found shot, um, shot dead in an elevator at the, uh, pay them on housing, which is a lot, a door on campus. It is a student apartment that is, uh, marked with students at the University of Houston and Texas Southern. And it's on Elgin, like I said, which is, uh, subject to H P D and H P D jurisdiction, um, that's your murder. Um, and guys, to be noted that this, these crimes are not just something that happened this year, but it, uh, has been happening. I remember throughout my time, there was a student that was robbed and robbed. Um, the locks had gone away, took their pizza and their phone. Um, the student got their phone back at night, they knew it was their pizza. Uh, there were students that were robbed in Lot E, which is where the majority of the lighting project has happened. Um, I want to know that I started at the University of Houston in twenty nineteen. Um, and it took, what is that, five years for these lights to be put in place? So I'm concerned that any of the plans the University of Houston will have will take flyers in that happens with holy flock of students who are subject to, uh, theater and crime. Um, I also want to know, uh, thank you to DA's office for being here. Um, one of my, uh, I was a resident, I was an RA at the University of Houston, um, during COVID. And in that time, there were more students assaulted on campus than I could probably count on my own hands. Um, at the time, campus was not even fit to stand that capacity for on-campus students. This is for on-campus, not surrounding area. Um, one of my residents who was assaulted, um, by a student I had was tried to assault us, uh, happened by someone that he doesn't referred it to the H P D. Um, and they was told that the DA's offices was prior administration, but not prosecuted because it just was not worth their time. Um, what also happened was that this student who was assaulted in C one requested to move the doors, but it would not be the same door as they assaulted. They said they would not be able to move the doors, mind you, campus provided a fifty percent pool, unless they paid for both minutes bases into the door. Um, they also had to go through, um, uh, meetings with CAPS. But these meetings kept occurring during the class time. They did not receive any additional support in the class, they did not support, uh, receive any tuition rebates or anything. This is an issue that went on for two full years and I'm not sure if it's a new fault yet. Um, there are issues on campus. There are issues that go far beyond U H P D, that go far beyond policing. Um, and I've also been told, I'm not quite sure if this is true, if it comes from U H P D or if it comes from the DA's office, there are multiple students who have been subject to sexual violence on campus who went to U H P D and told that they would not be able to pursue anything unless their name was told to be a student. Many students are afraid of retribution, not just when they're a student, if that happens. So they also aren't speaking of now because they feel much, uh, they feared, um, retaliation from the university. And so there are so many students who are not being heard because, this is a, though, they're not being heard because of this fear. And so I want to say, we already have police on campus. We have over thirty-three.
I know how things work. You don't have to tell me.
When will students be heard? When will they be included? And when will we have anything that happens, even from the multiple sexual assaults, uh, student suicides that happen? We demand real action, real accountability and for long.
We have no problems with any other agency.
And the resources that did not show up today at all. Thank you.
Do you have anyone to speak? Yes, sir, come on.
Let's go, everyone. But hey, before I start, guys, let's give it up. Eric Brown, behind bars tonight, the violent rapist. Come on, that's the feeling, that's the feeling, it's a college street. He's definitely doing a mess, you know? But hey. Yes, ma'am. Hey, we also need to hold some people accountable. Show them to your mess up this week. We have a rapist who was possibly ID'd off the hood. And that's going to require some accountability from here on out.
All right.
But hey, everyone makes mistakes, so we're going to hold it on him. But we're definitely going to need to change some things moving forward and hold him accountable moving forward.
Damn.
I also want to read a quote from someone very big at U H. "This is a city of fifty thousand between students, faculty, and administration. This is not an unsafe environment. Sure, we have a few incidents, but there's always going to be incidents when you're dealing with cities of fifty thousand. We'd like to have none," explains U H's Board Chair, Tillman Portino. What do you guys think of that quote? Yeah, I think it's a bunch of BS too. So I'd like to challenge Tillman Portino. If he thinks it's so safe, why don't you come to Moody Towers per week, away from your roast, and live with these students? And then you can tell us how safe it is.
Ooh. Oh, my God. Okay.
So I want to, do you have any students that you want to speak? Come on up.
Okay, I don't know how to pull up. My name is Susanto. I am, I have been a student part of the University of Houston system for, um, six years. I started at the University of Houston downtown and now I'm here at the University of Houston. Um, I didn't have a speech prepared, uh, because I didn't think of speaking tonight, but after hearing every week, the building occurred, started to get up here and speak, so I wrote some bullet points down. Um, now, I believe that the right quote, he's, Tillman Portino says, "These things happen." Well, someone, they shouldn't happen. They shouldn't be happening to students on campus, especially when it's your responsibility as the chair of the board of regents of the entire system. These things should not happen. Um, I also want to point out that we're speak about, uh, U H admin and how, uh, they do not have transparency with the student body. Almost every time that something occurs on campus, it seems to me, and two other colleagues I, um, have spoken to, that it's the same copied and past messaging that they have with every incident. And there's not really any genuine, um, conversations happening, uh, with students. And that should, that really needs to stop. It, it needs to stop happening because whenever we have student advocates speaking up and have, um, you know, these type of protests happening on campus, they need to really listen to what we're saying. We're not just going out there because we want to, um, go knock on her door. We, we're sitting out there because we want real change to happen. Um, but it seems to me that they just want to push us and ignore us and not really listen to us and honestly, this is stop. Um, the waste of spending on high religion, uh, high volume of police on campus when students, uh, assemble to protest. These student organizations are just practicing their first amendment rights. But we have really looked towards Tillman Portino and any other administrator basically sending U H P D and any other law enforcement entity to crack down, um, on protests happening on campus. Whether it's regarding, um, you know, sexual assault on campus or safety or, um, student fees. They always seem to send their entire police department to crack down these protests. And it shouldn't be happening, it should not be happening. Um, I also want to talk about signs and students who are speaking up. U H admin has continued to sign up students. I served, uh, I almost spoke earlier about the student visa back to committee. I was one of those members that served, um, a year ago on student visa back to committee, which by the way, is a state mandated committee, um, from the Texas Legislature. And it took us tooth and nail to fight for counseling services to receive more funding from the institution. They prefer to continue to push more funding to athletics, which I understand is an important factor to bringing the university up. However, when students are dying of suicide, we need to put the wellbeing of our student body first instead of our athletic department. Um, good girl. And so with that, you know, I ask Representative Jones and other Houston State reps, um, the entire Houston delegation to really press on on U H admin. Because even though, um, you know, State Center, um, or Doc, your name, yes, State Center works on, since it represents the U H community, um, there are students that might be living in your district or other colleagues of yours, uh, other students might be living in their districts, right? So my ask here tonight is to have the state, um, Houston delegation to, uh, write a letter to Chancellor Tor, to Chairman Portino, to the Board of Regents, and demand for their accountability and transparency with the student body. We're sick and tired of the constant cycle of, we're going to do something, but actually no work gets done. Um, and also another house I had is for any elected official that represents the U H community to take a walk at U H after the sun goes down and see how dark it is on campus. Because I will tell you, you're going to find several spaces that students use on a daily basis after hours that are literally pitch black. And that is very ridiculous. So those are my two asks. I thank you, Representative Jones, for putting this, um, together. I think there are the others, uh, who was here, present, and yeah, let's, let's fix some accountability on U H admin. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else that wants to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, can you hear me? Um, I didn't have anything prepared. I didn't, you know, speak today, but hearing all my fellow students who go to U H, um, I feel like I have to speak and I feel like I have to get, um, at least the most important point across the high field. As a student who lives on campus at the Cooper Place, um, I want to know that my funds are going to the right place. I have class all over campus and seeing elevators that are under construction in the I D S honor hall, seeing elevators that are completely broken for weeks on end, a P G H building. And last year when I was a freshman, seeing our old coach getting multimillion dollar buyout to leave the campus. It's embarrassing, quite frankly. And I feel that the University of Houston admin and staff and people who lead the University of Houston need to understand this. They need to understand that when us students hear that they've put a multimillion dollar project into place since COVID, that's not an accomplishment, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to hear that only thirty-four lights have been added since COVID. I mean, they proclaim student safety and they proclaim that they want to hear our voices. And when we give them these complaints, the first thing on their mind is to be defensive about it. And whether or not some of these students here are directly attacking some of these admin and staff, I am simply here to present a general overview of his comment and embarrassment. I want to know that my increased tuition prices and having to live on campus because I can't afford to live on campus, which means that I have to pay for a meal plan. I want to know that all of those funds are going back to us, back to students. I don't want another multimillion dollar, which is only going to take us to the playoffs by the way, to just fail again and again while our campus security fails again and again and again and again. And I feel, I know we don't have a lot of time, but I highly encourage anybody here who has something they need to say or something that they feel they need to say, I encourage you to get up here and say it, even if it lasts only a minute. That is why she's here, that is why they're here, that is why they're here, that is why all these people are here. This is the moment where change happens. This is the moment where they can listen to you. So please, if you have anything you need to say, come up here and say it because they will listen to you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here to listen to you guys and then I'll close when you finish. You ready? Let's go, let's do this.
Hello, my name is Aneke, I am the secretary of the Houston Community Project. And I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. I don't have statistics or information to tell you, I just have stories. Stories of real people, real students and real individuals like me who have been sexually assaulted on campus. I have a friend that I met while she was currently fighting a case where she was sexually assaulted during her freshman year of college while she was under the influence. Ever since then, she provided information about her experience to the police and people with autism multiple times, putting herself back into that traumatic situation, right back into that whirlwind. It was so bad that her eyes started slipping, she couldn't sleep at night, she was going to cats for therapy and she couldn't trust anyone, not even the closest friends. And to top it all up, right before she graduated, the owner was considered not going to be with us. He gets thrown away while she will continue to traumatize on his behalf for the rest of her life. This is what it feels like spending a university, hopeless. My wonderful friend and president of our club, Shayla, will not even let me walk to my mom late at night. Not even if it's across the street, it doesn't matter because she fears for my safety. I have to constantly look across my shoulder and fear that I will be next, that I will be another untamed and beautiful. On phones, on emails, on notifications and I'll just be another number on the university. If I can leave, see what has happened now, should be horrified and confused twice about third sentence about going to the University of Houston. We need to learn, the University of Houston is too bad.
Okay, you want to speak too sweet? Come on. And you two are going to be right soon, I thought we were going to just say, but that's fine, we are feeling low vibes and so you two are going to speak. There you go.
Okay, can you guys hear me? Well, I don't usually speak into a microphone, so this is kind of making me nervous, but um, when I walked into this room, I took note of the on and off flickering of the lights above me, which represents the on and off actions that the university provides for us students.
Damn.
I want to shed some of that missing light upon the increased prices of parking garages, of which I have to pay every semester, which have increased by fifty dollars, which is insane because for the time I go to more parking transportation cars driving behind me while I'm pulling back to go, with security, with cars, with cops in them, not just empty cars. And, um, I just want to see the university really listen to us if they can't even see their way through us. And I also want to take now on the fact that on February seventh, the moment where these violent occurrences were sent to us through emails, there has been a petition on SignMovement.org which has been started and that petition has reached over five thousand signatures. And that same petition with over five thousand signatures was taken down in less than twenty-four hours. Why was that? Because of inappropriate content? What's more appropriate than the lack of response from a public institution as big as UH? And following those twenty-four hours after, there was a second petition from Change.org, which had over one thousand signatures, but unfortunately, they just love starting to see the voice of us students because they just want to send these millions of dollars that we pay for residents, commuters, commuters, which is eighty-one percent of the population by the way, to these millionaires who don't give a crap about us and they just live their own merry little lives while we're here holding pepper spray in our hands and a heavy water bottle in the other hand just so we can go safe to our cars or norms. I'm an only child of an immigrant family and they cannot stop asking me every hour, am I okay? I do not want my mom to look at the news and see both the UH student has been sexually assaulted or even robbed or raped by someone around the area, which should not even be happening because there's so much security already and it really raises the question as to what even is going on? What are they doing? What's more important, looking on their phones while you're walking in silly vests claiming that you're an officer or a patrol or a guard or to actually protect us students without internalizing how they look? Based on some of the previous speeches that were being shared, I was actually like in the audience being very emotional when I saw one of the speakers shaking while they were expressing their fear. That should not be happening in a large university with tons of funds that can actually adequately protect us instead of harassing the students who are on protest, fighting for what needs to be served to us as students. Okay, vocal cords are alright? Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. This time for the last one to speak.
Hello. Um, I'm, my name is Alia, and I'm a student at the University of Houston. I, I want to say, I have been sort of documenting a lot of this as I've been going along and I've been trying to get back to it possible because I'm a pre-law student, I'm on the pre-law track at the university and I know the majority of students in the class department are actually women. And I actually recently checked the statistic and it's pretty much a study was conducted and it's fifty-nine percent of it. And I argue that that has only increased as the years I've gone along because we have to defend ourselves because nobody else can defend us. And that's what I've been learning and as I've gone through out documenting all of this. I started my documentation after like the assault happened, February seventh, and two days after, I actually went along by myself and I noticed a lot of things on campus and I said, I'm documenting this day. And I noticed first of all, my freshman year when I got here, that there was no lighting at all in the area, literally right next to the liberal visit hall, like where we live. And not only that, as it's been stated or stated by someone here, a lovely woman stated, that there's this recurring thing that happens called sexual assault and it happens in the first, you know, six weeks of school. And with no person next to the freshman mall, I mean, what does that say? What was going to happen, what did happen in dark areas? There's a place like on campus called Aggieland, it's sort of the central hub of our campus and that central hub is where a lot of people walk. It's always extremely congested during the day because I took and walked at night, nobody, nothing whatsoever. And I noticed that with the increase of light that we were towards you, I said, I wanted to, you know, to check for that and actually see when the lighting is gone. I still have thirty-four percent of my set in place, right? It's still a center, I guess, or maybe some more binges. Nobody has, those poor lights, they're completely downward, straight downward. And that is beauty because what, like, people walk around the area. If you're not like around the area, then what? And I want to make sure, what did I count for that? Oh, maybe it's not just the lighting that's a issue? Well, it, well, I, okay, now, what did I count for that? Maybe it's the lighting that's a issue? I walked around the area, the perimeter of Aggieland and it's completely pitch black, black and white area. And not only that, our campus continues to fund sort of like these campus, like, the eighties, I don't know, these projects and the lockdowns and pressure on our campus. Well, the way the potential workers have set up the gate is these gates are set up at a ninety degree angle adjacent to the sidewalks. And what that does is it literally leaves the sidewalks completely, like, nothing but the sidewalks. So if you ever, if you're ever walking around a campus at night and you bump into someone, you bump into the straight head. And a lot of times the way these, the sidewalks are like laid out, it's really poorly laid out. The way they're laid out is you can walk around the corner and then someone else can be walking around that corner and you won't even know who that person is, you won't ever see that person. So you don't know when your attack was actually going to happen until that person attacks you. So like this, yeah, and these, like I said, this construction has been going on since I got here, before I was here. It's, it's literally ridiculous. And I was going to talk about mental health, sort of the issue that's happening on our campus. Um, how it went before, like, it suggested that there was mental health facilities on campus. I love you for that, I'm actually, I'm disabled, I'm extremely disabled and I don't work at all, from anything at all. Because I can't, because my community extremely sealed out, you don't get protection. And the measures that are actually in place, you don't have, they're excuse access, excuse access policies, there are mental health policies and like I said, the mental health policy that's there, you go, we try to book an appointment, have with like a class and you, you don't get help. And the hell I've heard from people that they have gotten, it's extremely not, it doesn't feel safe. Like talking to these people who are assumed professionals. I mean, with the way they handle policing, I am kind of doubt if they're professionals, to be real. And like I said, like I'm, I'm disabled and the only other combination that they offer for disabled people are access rights. What am I going to do with access rights? Literally my hands are constantly in play, twenty-four seven, from writing, from typing on my computer, from anything and everything that I do on a day-to-day basis. I, I as a pre-law student and as a woman, especially a black woman, I was truly marginalized here and I know I'm marginalized, so I'm going to keep working and fighting to protect my spot here. I'm going to keep working as hard as I can in law and I'm going to get out of this school because that's the only way I do feel safe again. But I just, I think these things are, yeah, they're not going to happen. And the longer that we continue to ignore them, the longer they keep progressing. Because many here feel emboldened, there's a lack of community between them and here because we continue, we continue to fight and despair, despair for another. It's so, it's so weird how I, I left one community to try and empower the community here and I'm still being marginalized by a community that's here. This is supposed to be the responsibility of any of all, this is a city. And I will do that. Thank you.
Do you have anything else to say?
We thought that was the last one. That was the last one.
It's a huge one, it's off. You want special praise? I really missed the last one.
Hi everyone, my name is Hannah Waze. And I just want to be up here and share a quick story that we experienced that night. I didn't talk to UH PD three times in one night and that was when we were good. We were walking from T V Two Stadium, we had an event that would host everyone's day and we were going, I think my last issue was about four of us were walking. And we decided to use the right thing, guys, they told us to do call, check this around, oh, okay. We called a national ride. We asked for a ride, they told us, we are right next to UH PD, the station. And we called and we see, come first, so we assumed that that would be our ride because we are right next to the station. But we hit there and we asked, hey, are you alright? Like, you know, what's going on? And they were like, oh no, I'm going to another job. And given what's been happening lately, we're four girls standing out here in the cold and we're just gonna like stand here and wait. And so we're like, how long are we gonna have to wait? Okay, we'll just start walking. So we start walking and we get to our bed, great, we get ready to go. There's an officer outside. That's good, we can ask him, right? Surely he can help us. So we asked him, hey, what's going on? What happened? What's happened? How do I get somebody to help? Maybe we ran about, went about it the wrong way. Maybe we need to call, call, how, like, how do we get the help if we need to, we're in a situation again? And he responds, it's not even a security thing, it's a security thing, you have, you called the wrong people. Okay, well, what are the right ones? Who are the people that you just called and complained? So I asked all these questions, gives me the runaround. So I asked, okay, so can you get a ride? This is dark, we're cold and a burnt girl walked back, all red tees. Y'all know, that's the farthest I've ever been. So I guess like, I can only get two. Well, there's four of us, so we decided to ride and stay together because we're better together in groups. So instead, we walked all together back to the, to this vibe we were in. And we reached the last person that we interacted with and she was in UH, she was security. The people that they put on campus to make sure that we're safe, right? But she sees us and she goes, oh, you don't need a ride? Finally, we think we're about to get some help. And as we get closer, she responded saying, oh, I'm fighting over my people, never mind. And so we responded by saying, oh, can you still give us a ride? Like, it's only a few of us, let's get a ride. Oh, I'm about to go clock out. And reminding me the place that she was going to clock out at was right next to the place that we were about to go, where our parking stop is. So these are things that we're experiencing on campus. And when I called to complain, because before I just go up to her and start eating, I start, dude, I'm gonna, gonna complain first. And I asked and I said, what's going on? Why can't we get a ride? We talked to three different officers. Why can't I get a ride for a single one? And we're a bunch of girls, given what's going on on campus, this should not be happening. And she responded saying, well, we tried to call you back, you know how long it took them? Eleven minutes. All it takes is eleven minutes.
My mom is in the comments.
I mean, I'm on the UH PD, turn the lights on and get past traffic. Why can't they turn the lights on and come pick up the student in the evening? All it takes is eleven minutes and that's how long it took for them to get there. And so it was then our fault because we weren't there after eleven minutes had passed because we assumed we weren't getting a ride anymore. Something's gotta be done, it's just not okay and I don't feel safe on our campus and that's all.
So we're about to, I'm gonna sum up.
Sorry about the audio. It's just because they have the microphone close to the mouse.
It's really important because I think we have some guidance about what's going on. I just have to take a note, some of the things that I heard are this, orange and yellow beans. One, we need to know about the campus, I've heard any system things from the students, from the administration. Some people told me there's two phases, this school told me there are three phases. Are there two or there are three? They're different. Phase one is completed supposedly. When I asked, phase is two or phase is three, we're gonna be completed, they said by the end of the year. Most students told me they will tell me by next year. Different answers, I want to be the right answers, right answer, two plus two is always four. The next thing, um, I need some clarification on the number of security officers patrolling campuses. Any recent increases to staffing and out of control, when it's scheduled to allow a stupid deal? But going back to what I just heard, who should you call? I'm not the police, what's the difference? I'd like to know here between the police and the security people. Like, this is important to know who's supposed to be there to fix your problem. Something else I heard was we need mental health services for it. I will say this, I will share this, I actually got raped by a teammate when I was a teenager. I will share this. I actually got raped by a teenager when I was at the university. His student was out of class and I was a freshman. And years later, I got a bunch of counseling. So I would respectfully suggest to you, mental health issues are real and get counseling. My dad committed suicide. I was actually pretty much my dad committed suicide. And two of my uncles committed suicides. Suicide is serious to my family. And so I know that people will put away to end their lives under some circumstances and he never forgives. Every December seventh is very difficult for me. This is the day my dad killed himself. And I'm fifty-nine years old. I'll be sixty this year. So you'll basically provide meaningful mental health services. And I heard people here saying that they were supposed to reach out to, I have over five mental health services and they have them. Um, transparency and communication. I like the school, the detailed measures the university is implementing to ensure timely transparent communication to students regarding safety incidents, policies and ongoing investigations. I also heard a respectful protest. We have a first amendment to cry to protest. So I believe that a school should commit to upholding students' rights peacefully, stop sticking the police on the kids and stick the police on the garage. That's the nonsense in the bitch, I think. I don't know. I'm speaking another foreign language. I'm standing for emphasis. Don't stick the police on kids. Stick the police on criminals. Um, I have a connection here. I'm almost willing to mention my sister, Jennifer Wood Johnson, will do a walk after dark. So if someone wants to take me on a tour to walk the campus after dark so I can see how dark it is and where it's starting at, I will do it. My sister, will you do that as well? Okay, so whoever's taking this will, will do that. I'll try to invite some of my other elected officials colleagues so they can see as well. Um, I think that the school needs to be receptive to constructive criticism. Needs to foster an environmental student feed that is valued and addressed without the offenses, ensuring that concerns are met with openness and are committed to continuous improvement. I think that the school needs to clarify what are their plans for a solid curriculum fence. I heard somebody say something about the fence. I don't want my school like a jail. So if I was to drive down, uh, pass by TDC jail, a lot of fences up there. In third ward, you don't even get to check against third ward. And just because crime happens in third ward doesn't mean that the people that commit the crimes from the third ward, there are people that if, if they don't, the University of Houston does not have a safe environment, then it's hunting ground. Uh, I've heard about tuition reimbursement for crime victims. Considering from being a policy that offers tuition reimbursement and financial assistance to students who are victims of crime and knowledge man. Acknowledging the impacts such experiences can have on their different performances and financial stability and ability to study. I've also heard about have accessible victim support services where we ensure victim support services include counseling and advocacy. And they are available at times that accommodate students' diverse schedules. So don't schedule something when, when a student is gonna have to miss class. Uh, and a lot of students affected by crime do access health aid without disrupting their academic commitments. And also I talked about this earlier, the clarification on emergency contact information. So those are the things that I just heard up here. I was, you know, moderating and taking notes. My staff will take, um, more detailed notes. And also if you wrote a speech, if you could, if you feel like sharing it, please share it with my staff so they can make sure we don't miss any things. I also want to tell you that this is another town hall that I'll be doing. It's probably not going to be here because I'm not taking the lights at all. I'm very thankful for the very quick accommodations for us on very short notice. I'm going to be doing, uh, a town hall on Native Rights with the Police and ICE. Um, and the truth is, rules with the police are with ICE. Or with us with the local police and the figures that we're with, please presence.
I gotta, I gotta go. I gotta go. All right, friends. Thank you. You too. All right, friends. I gotta get going. I got a text message. I gotta handle some stuff. Plus I gotta still go. I haven't ate, friends. I'm getting shaky. That's why I had to sit down. I, I've been, I've been up. I only slept three hours, y'all. I'm so sorry. I only slept three hours. And I got a lot of shit going on too. And so I'm out, friends. I, I try to hang in there. Oh, I know my body. I'm so sorry. I gotta go get something to eat. I have not ate. And it's time to go, friends. I gotta take medication too, so. All right, y'all be safe out there. I love you guys. Uh, you know, I encourage people to come to these meetings so you can get all of it. Uh, y'all be safe out there, okay? Reporting live here off of Emancipation. I forgot the name of this building. I'll be back out later on. Shout out to all our law enforcement that was out here. We're here at Emancipation Cultural Center. Walk me to my car because I don't feel safe. Not staying, baby. Hold on. I gotta go this way. All right. Wait, am I going the right? No, I gotta go this way. I'm so lost. I'm just gonna walk in the grass. Oh no, I parked over there. Hold on, friends. I gotta orientate myself. Are y'all still there? Oh my God. Okay, I remember passing this cruiser. Yeah, I gotta go. Y'all be safe, man. Shout out to all the students that came out, you know, and, and that's important too. That's very important that, that people show up. The message is more louder and clear when people show up. I, I wanted to see the whole room packed. I don't know why. It wasn't packed. Yeah. Oh yeah, Mama Castillo is in. My mom's in the comments. I'm gonna walk straight ahead. The, the room should have been packed, you guys. That, that's one thing I noticed. But it's Friday. I know people want to go and have fun, but y'all got some serious issues. Safety, safety is an issue. Yeah, there's still, she's, she started talking about something else and it was my time. My, my body just, my, I had to sit down because my knee hurts. I do a lot of standing, you guys, when we're at crime scenes. And, uh, I do a lot of walking too. So, you know, I gotta take it easy on these knees. I've been up. I have, I only slept three hours. Maybe three and a half. So like I'm a little bit tired and I'm hungry. I want to go get something to eat.